Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council for this Monday, February 3rd, 2025. Welcome to all of you who are here in person and those of you joining us by Zoom. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowe, here. Councilmember Boke.
Here.
Councilmember Brandstetter.
Here.
Rethella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss has been excused, and Mayor Whelan.
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Well, thank you very much. And now, if you'd all please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence for servicemen and women serving this great country, both at home and abroad, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, thank you for joining us tonight. The first part of our agenda is the proclamation and presentation section. And tonight, we are pleased to present a proclamation recognized in February 2025 as Black History Month. We're excited tonight to be joined by some of our 2025 hidden heroes. And our first hero today was none other than Lakes High School student and our Lakewood Youth Council member Chase Washington. Each week, I'll be right with you there, Chase. We'll do the proclamation together. Each week, for the next six weeks, the city is going to be sharing these heroes on our city website and within all of our social media channels. And for those heroes who are here tonight, I do ask you to join with Chase and meet me at the podium for reading the proclamation. So today, we'll have Chase, Darwin, and Chartres Peters, and Lisa Boyd will join us with Chase at the podium. And heroes who can also join online include Vanessa Woods, Tanika Watford, and Grant Twiman. So we'll allow for a photograph, but Chase is going to help me, even though it's a little impromptu, you can help me read the proclamation, right? We've done this before. All right. Yeah. I'll let you pull those and pass those out. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming tonight. It is indeed an honor for Chase and I to present this proclamation. How we've done this before is we kind of go paragraph by paragraph to share the honor of recognizing this month as Black History Month. I'll start. Whereas Black History Month is celebrated throughout the United States of America during the month of February, and the 2025 Black History Month theme is African Americans and Labor, and
Whereas this theme focuses on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, intersect with the collective experiences of Black people, and
Whereas be it the traditional agricultural labor of enslaved Africans that fed low country colonies, debates among Black educators on the importance of vocational training, self-help strategies, and entrepreneurship in Black communities, or organized labor's role in fighting both economic and social injustice, Black people's work has been transformational throughout the United States, and whereas
And whereas this observance affords an opportunity to reflect upon the journey and contributions of Black Americans and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation, and
And whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation recognizes that all people are created equal and should be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character, and
Whereas since 2019, the city of Lakewood has celebrated local and national Black leaders through its Hidden Heroes Campaign, which showcases individuals making a difference in their communities, and
Individuals like Chase Washington and other members of the Youth Council. And whereas individuals selected as the 2025 Hidden Heroes exemplify what it means to give back to one's community and to demonstrate a commitment to volunteerism, leadership, community, and relationship building and entrepreneurship. And whereas whereas there's still some more.
And whereas there still exists need to strengthen the insight of all our residents regarding the issues of human rights and to eliminate discrimination towards minority groups, and whereas young people are encouraged to prepare to assume leadership roles to work towards the achievement of freedom, justice, and equality, and
And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to the ideals of a free society and is a community of great cultural diversity, which it values and celebrates, and this city is dedicated to the fraternity and community of all people. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council does hereby proclaim this February 2025 as Black History Month here in the city of Lakewood, and we urge all residents to join us in this observance by learning about our local hidden heroes through reading their stories that will be shared on the city of Lakewood's website and its social media channels, and by working to eliminate discrimination throughout our community. Proclaim this third day of February 2025, all members of Lakewood City Council. And Chase, on behalf of the Youth Council and your incredibly wonderfully diverse group of young leaders, we thank you for your participation tonight, and we thank all of you for being here, and we'll present each of you, Chase and I will, part of this proclamation, and we'll ask you folks if you'd like to say a few words, and then we'll have a photograph. You look like you'd say more than a few words. Well, thank you very much, Lisa. Good to see you. Good to see you. Thank you for coming tonight. Lisa, did you want to say something? Welcome, too. Tremendous leader all these years, any one of you.
I'm so proud to be here. You know, my, I always talk about mom when I step in the city council room, so I will say what a great role model she was for me. And I'm just trying to do a little tiny bit of what she was doing. She had her finger in everything, right? That was giving back to kids. She started the Youth Council many years ago, and I'm so proud of you guys. And she would, she's looking down just smiling right now. And so I thank you for this honor. I was telling somebody at the commissary, I don't know why I'm getting this, but you know, I'm so grateful to be a part of Lakewood. I grew up here, as you probably guys already know, and it's home to me. And so after being a principal here for 20-plus years, giving my age away a little bit, I'm retired now, but I now have time to give back in other ways. So I'm really excited about being here, and thank you. Thank you for this honor. I appreciate it.
Come on around. Council, come on down. Tanika, thank you for showing up on Zoom tonight. I see you on my screen. Welcome and congratulations, and we have a proclamation for you as well. So thanks for your participation and your leadership and being part of the Hidden Hero Program. Chase, before you go, I just want to say I read your story on the Hidden Hero profile today. Fantastic profile. Young man's going to be a civil engineer, looking to go to civil engineering school. My only comment is to remind you that Gonzaga University has a great engineering program, my friend. So I can I can get a little application waiver for you, whatever, so. Just make sure you apply to the Zags. All right. You're welcome. Thanks. Go study. Okay, next, we have recognition of the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board members. So I'd like to call on the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board members in attendance and present certificates of recognition. The members being recognized are Glenn Spieth, Bethany Campbell, Christina Manetti, and Amelia Escobedo. So I think we've got Glenn here tonight, and Bethany, come on up. Do we have the certificates up there, Madam Clerk? Fantastic. So we'll do that real quick. Well, the council wanted to make sure that we recognize the longstanding contributions of members of the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board. Oh. Is she coming? Oh, okay. Well, Glenn Spieth, Christina Manetti, and Bethany. And the importance of volunteerism here in the city of Lakewood cannot be understated. When the city was first recognized as a new city in 1996, it took the incredible amount of effort by many, many hands to make the good work to become a city, and that included the volunteers on the original citizen advisory boards that commissioned. So we just want to thank you for your assistance and your help with the Landmark and Heritage Advisory Board over the years. And let me just read one of the proclamations here. Certificate of recognition is awarded to Glenn Spieth for his 15 years of service to the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board and his commitment to recognizing and preserving Lakewood's rich history as a volunteer where he served seven years as the El Haber Chair and two years as vice chair. And Glenn, thank you very much. Thank you. And Bethany, this certificate of recognition is awarded to Bethany Campbell for her eight years of service to the Landmark and Heritage Advisory Board and for her commitment to recognizing and preserving Lakewood's rich history. Thank you very much. And I think Ms. Manetti is out there. I see you all. Want to recognize Christina Manetti for her service to the Landmark and Heritage Advisory Board and for her commitment to recognizing and preserving Lakewood's rich history. And then the final member who is not here, Amelia Isabel Escobedo. We recognize her for her service to the Landmark and Heritage Advisory Board and for her commitment to recognizing and preserving Lakewood's rich history. So Glenn, as the former chair, if you'd like to say a few words, we just again extend our thanks and appreciation for your service to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the Landmarks Board was always an important board. When I first came on, I started with the Parks Board. Then I served five years with the Planning Advisory Board. And then I'm not sure how many years I've been to the Landmarks Board. However, I helped Jeff Bozeloff form the Landmarks Board. I was president of the Lakewood Historical Society at the time and didn't feel I should go on it. Walter Neary was the first chair, and eventually I came on the board itself. I attended every meeting since it was formed. So had a lot invested in it. There were some meetings where I couldn't talk as a as a one for the public, but I got through some of those troubled times. But all in all, I think we accomplished a lot, made a lot, a number of historic markers. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Well, it's been a wonderful time being able to serve Lakewood, especially as a University Place resident, but Clover Park, class of '84. So we never go away, really. I just want to remind you guys that that history and your historic structures are what makes Lakewood unique. And so even if you don't have us, don't just see the old buildings. Right now, you've got a bunch of stuff that's recently become eligible, and it's all really cool '60s kitsch. So embrace the kitsch. All right, thanks.
Next, we have our Youth Council report, and I believe other than Chase, we have other great members of the council. Come on up for your presentation tonight. And go ahead and introduce yourselves and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan and the council. My name is Raffarau Guja, and I'm a senior at Bellarmine Preparatory School. This month, Youth Council has been helping with helping the Lions Club with their annual crab feed on February 22nd. 16 Youth Council members signed up to help and create a fantastic evening for attendees. Our role will be to greet the attendees and help with bussing tables and cleaning up. Earlier, earlier the same day, eight other Youth Council members will participate in Dr. Scott's beloved Community Action Workshop from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. at Fort Silicone Park Pavilion. Now, I'll turn it over to Bridget to report on our other activities.
Good evening, council. My name is Bridget Holbrook, and I'm currently a sophomore at Clover Park High School.
Thank you.
During our meeting tonight, in celebration of Youth Leadership Month, members worked with Derek Gibson to create a fun video that will be aired this week on the city's social media pages, so stay tuned. That concludes our presentation. We are happy to take any questions.
Well, great, thank you. Any questions of our Youth Council members? Mr. Brandstetter.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to hear that the video is going to be posted up and going on, but could you tell us a little bit about the process of deciding to do it and the planning for the content of it?
So for our videos, we usually go over it as a group of what we want to discuss in the videos and how we want it to go, and we take like the most popular idea and create it.
Go.
And we work with media.
Okay, well, I think that it's, it serves well to allow the community to see your engagement with issues that are important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you all for coming. I hope you're enjoying your year, and we look forward to hearing more about the Youth Summit as we get closer.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Absolutely worthy of applause, all of our youth, for sure. Next, we have the Clover Park School District Report, and I think Chrissy Kim, if you're here. There you are, welcome. Welcome, Director Kim.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, council members. I am here to give the Clover Park School District Report, and the first thing that I want to say is thank you for the partnership on the Hidden Heroes project that we are collaborating on in honor of Black History Month. I look forward, this is my own personal commentary, I look forward to the day where we no longer need a Black History Month, as Black History is American history and should be highly embedded in all of our history courses. But until that day comes, I'm thankful we have this month to honor it. Also, February 3rd through 7th, so this week, is School Counseling Week. Our school counselors take care of our students' emotional and mental health and also support their academic goals. And so I take this as a, an opportunity to tell you to thank our school counselors if you see them out and about, and also to take a moment to care for your own mental and emotional health. We do have our district STEAM Fair coming up, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, and that opens up on February 12th, and then on March 8th, which is a Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 at Harrison Prep, and for heroes, we invite the community and families to attend. It's a fabulous event. There's lots of community partners there, and you get to see the children's amazing thinking in all the areas of STEAM. So I encourage you to put that date on your calendar. And then finally, I'm probably saving the most important thing for last, but we do have a district four vacancy when Dave Anderson resigned his position that caused us to launch an application process to fill that vacancy until the next regular election in November. To be eligible, a candidate must be at least 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and reside in and be a registered in the director for district, which is the telecom, McCord kind of area, and you can get those boundaries on our school or on our school district website, and you can find the application on our school board section of the district website. And that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you very much, Director. Any questions? Director Kim?
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much for coming. That concludes the proclamation and presentation section of tonight's agenda. We now turn to the public comment section. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or by email at BSchumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically, and for purposes of keeping our transparent record, we asked the clerk to read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance.
Mayor Whelan, the city received no written comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to any matter relating to city business under this public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person, and we ask if you are here physically or participating by Zoom, that you simply state your name and residence for the record, and we'll provide you our three minutes for public comment. Virtual comments are also allowed and authorized and welcome here in the city. If you'd like to attend or provide virtual public comment, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing the telephone number 253-215-8782, enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373, and then upon entering the Zoom room, use the raise the hand feature to be called upon. So tonight, I'm going to call first on those who have appeared in person. If you've signed in on the sign-in sheet, great, I'll call you by name. If you've not signed in, that's okay, too. Just feel free to queue up after I call for folks to queue up after the sign-in sheet named individuals. The first is Mr. James Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I'm James Guerrero. I'm a local architect, and it came to my attention that there were some revisions to the zoning code that were recently adopted January 1st specifically, specifically related to accessory dwelling units. And so I'll kind of quote the section, so it's out of the municipal code 18A.40.110, section B1E, and it says, "The gross floor area required for both attached and detached ADUs shall be at least 1,000 square feet and not more than 1,200 square feet excluding the garage." Prior to the, that language showing up in the code, so just before January, the limitation was not that narrow of a band, and I suspect that the reason for the change may have been that the state passed House Bill 1337, and that bill, section 4, item F, states, "The city or county may not establish a maximum gross floor area requirement for accessory dwelling units that is less than 1,000 square feet." So I interpret that to be stating that Lakewood cannot set the limit for the maximum size of ADU to less than 1,000 square feet, but it does not give any criteria for setting a minimum amount of square footage for an ADU. And so to that end, I, I did some research on other jurisdictions. I went through 10 of them, Silicon, Auburn, Thurston County, Tacoma, UP, Pierce County, Puyallup, Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater. Only three of those jurisdictions have ADUs that have minimum requirements for ADUs. Now, it's Silicon at 320 square feet, and Auburn and Thurston County at 300 square feet. So the, I guess I'm pointing it out in that I, I think setting a limit on the minimum of ADU is an okay thing, but the setting it as high as 1,000 square feet really limits what your, what an ADU is. To that end, there's three jurisdictions that have, so Lacey, Tumwater, and Olympia hired a local architect to design ADUs for their cities, and so if you want to build one in their city, they'll give you the plans for free. They have three different sizes, 480, 600, and 800 square feet, just as an example of kind of typical ADUs. And it happened that my own office undertook my own office undertook an endeavor to design ADUs that it's our intent to bring them to cities like Lakewood and say, here, we would like to work with you on designing ADUs that the public might have available to them. My own office did this, and we did this about a year ago. But we designed, so we designed five different ADUs and they ranged in size from 790 square feet to 1,000 square feet. So
Great.
Our intent was that, I guess my time is done. So, uh, thank you for your time.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Next, Ms. Vicky Stanich. Yeah. The buzzer has a very loud appeal tonight, Ms. Schumacher. It's almost like a trapdoor or something.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Vicky Stanich and I live here in Lakewood, 8915 Dalwin Court Southwest. And, um, good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor, well, Deputy Mayor Moss isn't here, and members of City Council. I am speaking on behalf of the newly formed, uh, Fort Silicon Park Neighborhood Association. First, I would like to thank you for resurrecting the concept of neighborhood associations as a place where community members are able to come together to get to know one another and to discuss city improvements, concerns, and invite city representatives to update residents in their respective areas. The, the public is invited to attend our next meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. We, we plan to canvass door-to-door in our neighborhood to inform our neighbors of the upcoming meeting. Additionally, our members are planning to hand out flyers at public places and small businesses. And by the way, I have, um, I think you may have, uh, received a flyer. Thank you. Uh, we are very thankful that Christopher Davis, Neighborhood Connections Program Coordinator for Lakewood, has worked patiently and diligently at giving us guidance throughout the process of forming a neighborhood association. A question arose at our last meeting. When the City Council thought about creating the Neighborhood Connections Program, did the Council also consider a budget beyond Chris's salary for support in running the Neighborhood Connections Program? Um, is there a budget for refreshments to make the community feel welcome at meetings and for handouts to advertise events outside of community meetings like Desserts on the Driveway, for example, that we can share at events, at events and businesses? The City of Lakewood would benefit in many ways from neighborhood associations and their work to improve and educate residents about resources and activities within the city. If the city is serious about the success of neighborhood associations, then a budget to support the associations and their activities would help very much. We would appreciate thoughts from the City Council about the idea of a budget for neighborhood associations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Ms. Christina Minetti.
Everybody, Christina Minetti, I'm speaking on behalf of Garryo Coalition in Lakewood. I'd like to update you on the environmental situation in Spanaway at the Tacoma Rescue Mission's Tiny Home Village Project on a major wetland complex with the presence of multiple other critical areas, which the City of Lakewood helped fund with $100 million of Lakewood's ARPA funding. Since January 25th, over 100 fish, and by some estimates, hundreds of fish, have turned up dead and dying in Spanaway Lake extending from Coffee Creek. They continue to die today, or they continue to die today. I suppose they're still dying as long as the day is lasting. Why are they dying? Agencies are investigating, as have private individuals with expertise in the field of fish biology and aquatic chemistry. One of the multiple federal, state, and county code violations that have already occurred at the tiny home site was unpermitted work in the wetland, including the modification in quotation marks of a culvert under Wasman Road, which is a tiny, tiny road, which resulted in the release of a great deal of silt and iron. The poor fish who died have been dissected and their gills were full of silt and iron. These fish in all likelihood have needlessly died as an unintended consequence of this reckless treatment of the wetland there. Moreover, a large quantity of ox, iron, iron oxyhydroxide was there, 14 times the EPA standard. And this was a result of Pierce County's failure to maintain that system previously. The City of Lakewood and its City Council will say that this has nothing to do with it, that it only donated money to this worthy cause, but it will be tainted by association with this highly questionable project and its willingness to proceed without permits in a protected wetland complex. We request that the City of Lakewood be more careful going forward how they use our city's money. Rather than, rather than use those funds here in Lakewood, the city has given it to an ill-conceived project in a federally protected wetland complex with concerns about its ongoing finances. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last individual who has actually signed in, but let that not deter you. If you're interested in providing public comment tonight, feel free to step up to the podium. Mr. Dur, I see you anxiously scrambling to make your way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for the opportunity to comment. I'd like to make a couple of comments about-
And give you your quick name and residence.
What's that?
Name and residence.
Oh. Uh, my name is Dave Dur, and did you say?
Lakewood.
Lakewood. I live here.
There you go.
I want to make a couple of additional comments about ADU and size. My fam, my family and I have been able to take advantage of the opportunity to construct an ADU and are currently, my family and I have, uh, been able to take advantage of the opportunity to construct an ADU and, and are currently, uh, anticipating beginning a second. The, um, when we built our ADU, the max, max that we do have, the maximum size was 1,000 square feet. The, uh, minimum size does create a problem that can prevent others in Lakewood from taking advantage of this, this chance to build at a reduced, uh, reduced cost because of limited, limiting development costs. And also create an opportunity for some income, uh, for those who choose to do this on property that they already own. What 1,000 square feet does is, um, push up against setbacks um, that could be limiting or prohibitive on certain, uh, parcels that a lower number won't necessarily do that. I agree with James that a minimum size is, is a, a good idea, but I would suggest that it being a, a thousand square feet kind of works against the whole principle as I understand it. And, uh, that's all I have to ask you to consider tonight.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the audience wish to provide public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none physically, we'll turn to those on Zoom. And the first hand I see raised is Mr. Dennis Haugen, followed by James Dunlop.
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Living in Sioux Falls, moved from Lakewood, Washington to Sioux Falls, South Dakota in, uh, 2020. And, um, at the time, of course, there was a lot of craziness going on. You just couldn't understand. You know, Law and Order, it was the Summer of Love. And math was racist and, oh my goodness sakes. Well, I'm happy to note that, uh, common sense is flowing across America very rapidly. And looking at the, uh, appointees that are becoming leaders, they're all top-notch leaders. And they have common sense. And they're going to do very well. And of course, we, you know, one of the big things was, how could an elected official, governor, mayor, or whatever, encourage people to break the law? And coming to America without going through the portals and applying is breaking the law. I may not be a lawyer, but it just seems to me that a lot of lawyers agree with me. Breaking the law. Well, it appears that we're going to stop that very quickly. Because the resources are being applied in a very big way and a very quick, quick way. You know, when they're unvetted, you don't know who's selling drugs and who's bringing crime in. What happens when you go through the portal, you get some chance to take applications and try to find out whether you're filling the country with criminals or what. But I could never understand. Some of these leaders call themselves lawyers, mayors, doctors, or whatever. And they would say such stupid, stupid things. But I think that era is going to end. And hopefully very quickly. I did listen to Mr. Ferguson, the governor, on some YouTube videos, and one of his YouTube videos, he was claiming he knew that Trump was going to be president before Trump even ran or even said he was. So he said he and Brown were practicing on how to take after Trump. Shadow boxing? With your taxes? You need a better leader, in my opinion. You need a better leader. But you're probably going to have to wait a little while to get a better leader. Because state leaders are very important to leading all of the counties and the cities and where they go. Thank you.
Next, James Dunlop.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is, uh, James Dunlop and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I was going to comment in the last public, public meeting, but I didn't know it was going to start at 6:00. But what I wanted to say was, I listened to the Council's deliberations regarding the sunlighting of the Landmarks Committee. I don't know, I can't offhand its precise title. And, yeah, I listened to it and it struck me that what was happening, I may be wrong, but it seemed to me that the city bureaucracy had a clear idea about what should happen to that committee and that it should just go. And there was very little notice and it seemed that the City Council basically deferred to the city bureaucracy. And this just happens all the time. And it, you know, it does, um, raise the question, you know, what is, what is a City Council, Council member for? I mean, they are, they're there to protect the city and protect the city's residents. They're not there to rubber stamp the city's bureaucracy. And in terms of some of the things being said and some of the arguments being said, you know, about short notice, you know, there was, I think one of the City Council members, um, suggested that, you know, members of the public and others should know what's going on because they should listen to study sessions and by listening to study sessions, they would get a warning about what was happening. I mean, I think that's quite a burden on Lakewood residents to be able to listen to study sessions, which can go on for some time, as you well know, to know what is happening. And, you know, I don't know whether or not the, that the Landmark and Heritage Committee should have been sunsetted, but it does seem to me that there was insufficient notice, insufficient consultation. And it seems to me to, to just be a symbol of what is going on in this city. I, regardless of what is said, you know, this is a city that is in decline. Its heritage is being ripped up and history, of course, is something that is created. It's not something objective. People decide what is of historic value. You know, I noticed in the last meeting, but I, well, meeting, maybe the meeting before last, you know, you're talking about this complete focus on the H-bahn. You've decided, the city has decided they want to completely focus on one or two things. And that's how they want to interpret history. And so history is not something objective. And so Lakewood has been residents, been given, have been given the history that the city wants to give them. And the removal of the, of the Landmarks and Heritage Committee seems to, seems to support this trend. And so I think what is happening is, is bad. And I think that Council members need to ask themselves, who are they representing? Thank you.
That's the last hand I see raised. Madam Clerk, do you see any other callers who wish to provide comment? Virtually? Very well. I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of January 13th, 2025. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of January 21st, 2025. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of January 21st, 2025. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $5,985,299.47 for the period of December 14th, 2024 through January 15th, 2025. E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,408,162.31 for the period of December 16th, 2024 through January 15th, 2025. F, motion number 2025-08, authorizing the execution of an agreement with DP Excavation LLC in the amount of $357,825 for the demolition of dangerous and nuisance structures at 9230 through 9330 Bridgeport Way Southwest. G, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk. One, Community Services Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of October 16th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any Council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmembers Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Brandstetter that we adopt the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda ordinances. Ordinance number 826. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 826, granting EZ Fiber a non-exclusive franchise for the transmission of telecommunications in, through, over, and under the rights of way in the City of Lakewood.
And to provide an overview of all things in, through, over, and under rights of way in Lakewood, we have Mr. Vargas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Michael Vargas here to review the EZ Fiber franchise agreement before you tonight. Uh, this is the same franchise agreement, that the Council, was also included in your review two weeks ago, and we looked at the sort of overview of EZ Fiber's, um, build-out plan here. This, uh, franchise should look very familiar because it is a telecommunications franchise agreement that has been standardized with the city and that we also deployed last year um, with telecom companies such as Light Curve. So this should look fairly familiar. To go over some salient points here, the term of this franchise is five years initially, with up to three five-year extensions for a possible total up to 20 years. This is to provide a regular cadence at which both parties, the City of Lakewood and EZ Fiber, um, keeping up with the telecom franchise, have a chance to go back to the franchise and see if anything needs updating with technologies. You'll also find, um, familiar clauses as well, such as relocation. Um, also, it's a non-exclusive franchise. And we also have reference to your, um, degradation fee when it comes to pavement cutting. So that's also included in here. Um, but yeah, that about sums up the, the review here. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Any questions by members of Council? And just for the benefit of the audience, we did review this in some detail at the last study session, uh, in which we had a presentation not only from Mr. Vargas, but from representatives of the franchisee. And the city attorney allowed us to ask questions to review the actual documentation. So, Council members, any questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 826?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt it.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Laura Sella, that we adopt ordinance number 826. Any further discussion? Councilmember Brandstetter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm glad to see that we've moved this forward to this point. Uh, I do think that Mr. Vargas and the representatives from EZ Fiber, were able to quite comprehensively explain, uh, what they, their, their vision for how that they will do it. And I'm particularly happy that this is a utility that is, uh, in line with our desires and actually the community's desires to underground, uh, as much as, as we can, as well as to provide some competition in an area- as well as to provide some competition in an area that although it's been open to anyone who wanted to enter into it, that there are many places in the city of where there is a single provider of this communication system. So, and while it will take a while to invest the millions of dollars that they plan to do that, I think that, you know, this is a, a, a good point for the city to be at, to have something that's going to make a positive change in the long term, particularly in some areas of the city of where they're perhaps underserved by the quality of the Wi-Fi in some respects. And I'm certainly in favor of approving the project.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Any other comments or questions? Council member Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled with, with this. I, I think that if you spend a little bit of time just Googling their website and what they offer, it's, it, it looks pretty awesome, something that I would be super excited to, if it was serving my neighborhood, certainly. So with that said, we do have a number of projects going on or, you know, subdivisions going in. And it'd be nice to, I don't know if they're aware, but you know, if they could, if that's in an area that they're planning on, you know, routing services do, I'm sure it'd be easier for them to do it before the roads are all built. Anyway, just trying to do anything we can to help kind of coordinate and make things easier for them. Thanks.
Thank you. Agreed. And I know we, we mentioned something of that kind at the study session. So I'm, I'm confident that staff is coordinating and discussing the open projects we have for 25 and beyond so that they can appropriately coordinate. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. It'll be part of the permitting process and also coordination with construction. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Anything else from anybody? I, I too echo the excitement to bring additional service, more competitive service, and hopefully enhanced service at a reduced price to the benefit of the residents. So we'll see how it all transpires, but that's certainly the hope. Okay. In the absence of any further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance number 826, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Ordinance number 826 has been adopted. We now turn to resolutions. The first, resolution number 2025-02, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2025-02, conditionally approving the 11409 Kendrick LLC multi-family tax exemption.
Very good. Thank you. And for this, we have our economic development manager, Ms. Becky Newton.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen and members of council. This is a resolution approving an MFTE for eight-year exemption, a conditional certificate for 11409 Kendrick LLC. In your packet, beginning on 134, followed by a resolution, there was an error on the resolution which has been updated from 11419 to 11409 Kendrick LLC. So that has been corrected. On page forty, 144, there is a map showing the location of the property. And outlined in red is the project. It's 15 units and under the name of Lakewood Station Apartments, showing the proximity to another MFTE that you approved in 2024, which was the Kendrick Town Homes, 44 units. It is recommended that the city council approve this resolution and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement regarding the residential target area development. The project is located within the Lakewood Station District residential target area, which allows for an eight or 12-year exemption. The proposed project meets all the requirements defined in the Lakewood Municipal Code 3.64, the property tax exemptions for multifamily housing. The proposal has focused on providing high-quality design materials and ensuring a building design that results in positive architectural composition in a strongly oriented to the pedestrian environment. The project adds 15 new market rate residential units with 16 parking spaces. The code requires 1.25 stalls per unit, but this has been adjusted by reduction allowed for the proximity to the Sounder Station. Within the code on LMC 18C 600, 610B4, reduction of house, for housing in proximity to the Sounder Station, when located within one-quarter mile of the Sounder Station, which this project is well within that, an applicant may apply for an exception allowing minimum parking requirements to reduce by at least one parking space for per bedroom or three-quarters parking space as justified through a parking study prepared to the satisfaction of the community development director. The community development department allowed a parking reduction of one parking stall per dwelling unit, given the site's close proximity to the Sounder Station. So a little bit more on the actual project. It's a three-story apartment complex with a footprint and total building square footage of 11,763 square feet. As mentioned, there are 16 parking stalls, of which five are compact and one has a van-accessible stall with striped access aisle. The current assessed value for the property is $360,000 with a tax principal of $3,700. Permit fees approximately at $130,000 for the project. Construction value is approximately $4.5 million. And I mentioned the error, which has been taken care of. And we estimate that the annual property taxes, including the improvements, would be approximately $55,000 annually after the tax exemption period. Of that, Lakewood would received approximately $4,700 annually, beginning the first year after the exemption. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Just, just a question. I know, given kind of the update in the administrative review and consideration, we're not to get in the weeds and my intent is not to do that. But I, I just noticed that the project complies with the design specifications and code, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes it would be helpful in these, in addition to the map, just to attach an elevation drawing or a site plan, just so we can see how the buildings fit on the lot. From my perspective, it would be helpful just to see it. I know, again, we're not getting in the weeds on those kinds of things, but it would be helpful to see what the aesthetically pleasing design actually looks like.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Any questions? Anybody? Ms. Newton? Very good. Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2025-02? No moves?
Seconded.
It's been moved by council member Pearson, seconded by council member Branstadter that we adopt resolution 2025-02. Any further discussion? Council member Branstadter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you know, I am supportive of granting this multifamily tax exemption. You know, multifamily tax exemptions are incentives to developers, but they need to do more than just meet the minimum requirements in the code. They should satisfy some elements of, of the vision for the future of the community. And in this case, incentivizing the construction of a multifamily structure in the Lakewood Station District, and in fact, in very close proximity to, to the station, does that. It's, it aligns with the, the vision that we codified in the Lakewood Station District plan. And so I think that it's appropriate to, 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 to do that, you know? And recognizing that multifamily tax exemptions are, first of all, primarily focused on getting things developed in a timely manner where you are. And I would remind you, and the deputy mayor is not here, but when we were doing the vision for Lakewood and we got spent a year and a half working with the community on the vision. You know, one of the constantly recurring themes from the community was, we already have too many apartments. But the reality in the interim years has been that in order to plan for population growth, the, the, the long-term solution of that to, to make real progress towards being able to combination grow is for quality multifamily units to be brought online. And the multifamily tax exemption is a tool to bring them on earlier, but in the right place. And I think that this, this project satisfies that timeline and the place requirements that, that, that will be viewed positively by the community.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Well, very good. Well, seeing none, I'll ask for all those in favor of adopting resolution 2025-02, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2025-02 has been adopted. We now turn to resolution 2025-03, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2025-03, amending the 2025 docket of comprehensive plan, land use zoning map and policy amendments.
Thank you. And for this, we have our planning manager, Ms. Tiffany Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. This begins on page 145 of your packet. And what you have there is the agenda bill and then a draft resolution number 202503. This is related specifically to rezoning the parcel that was purchased toward the end of '24, after the adoption of the docket for 2025 comprehensive plan cycle for the use of a downtown park. So the intent here is to add this to the '25 packet in order to rezone it as open space recreation, just to make it very clear that that's the use that's going to be there. And so this is changing the docket. This is not doing any substantive amendments at this point.
Excellent. Any further questions of Ms. Spear? Great. Thank you very much for the overview. It's a single item for the docket. And that pertains, again, to the land previously acquired by the city down there adjacent to the Colonial Plaza. Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to adopt resolution 2025-03?
Yes, I move to adopt motion 2025-03.
I second that motion.
It has been moved by council member Laura Sella, seconded by council member Bokey, that we adopt resolution 2025-03. Any further discussion? Council member Branstadter.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I certainly am in favor of the docket item that is sought to be added by this resolution. However, I also look at this resolution being on our agenda today as an opportunity. And one of the things that has come to our attention, both before this evening, but even put forward to us by public comment today, has to do with that there perhaps should be some, we look at the size requirements for ADUs that are in the, our land use and, and, and zoning regulations that we adopted as a part of the 2024 docket. I am not always the person who is in greatest favor of everything that Olympia mandates. Okay, but when they, when they do so, I think that we should be judicious in how we apply those mandates to make sure that they accomplish things that are good for Lakewood in, within, within the framework of what is, what is required. That I have to admit that as we were going through and approving the 2024 comprehensive plan and land use regulation changes, that I didn't recognize that the numbers that were applied to ADU size, to include the minimum size, were in fact precisely mandated in that we had flexibility to do that. You know, I was surprised by the minimum recommendation from the, from the, from the planning commission. And I, thinking to the time of when I had a home that had an ADU that didn't, wasn't that big. Okay, to be able to go and do that. And, and I was wondering whether the planning commission was setting that 1,000 square foot limit to try to discourage. But I, I'm not in favor of discouraging it. I'm in, I am in favor of ADUs being built with, with, within, within code and that they be quality things because people are going to live in them, to be able to go and do that. So this resolution, to me, provides an opportunity to not just add one item to the docket, but to add a second item. And in that regard, I would, would move to that the following schedule be adopted for incorporation of accessory dwelling unit into the city's comprehensive plan 2025 work cycle, specifically to include a February 19th Planning Commission study session and introduction, an April 2nd Planning Commission public hearing, an April 16th Planning Commission action and recommendation, May 12th Council Study Session, considering the Planning Commission recommendations, of May 19th Council Public Hearing, and a July 2nd Council Action and Adoption of an Ordinance.
Very good. We have a motion to amend resolution 2025-03 by Mr. Branstadter, articulating the addition of a series of processes for the Planning Commission to make its recommendation to the council for updates to the accessory dwelling unit regulation and code. We have a second. So we have a second to council member Branstadter's motion to amend. Any further discussion on the motion to amend, Mr. Branstadter?
Mr. Mayor, I will eventually tell you that I don't know what the right number should be. That, but I, 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 I'm merely saying that I think that the number that we have put in place should be reviewed. Okay, and that my motion merely puts it on to the agenda of the Planning Commission in their 2025 docket in a timeline that is equivalent to the other sorts of similar items that they're going to need to be considered and perhaps even some items that the legislature is going to create for them to consider going on in, in, in this, in this session. And, and so, you, you know, that I'm certainly not proposing a number. I'm, I'm merely proposing that it does seem to be an item that should be reviewed and that rather than establishing a separate process to review only this number, it is better to incorporate it into the systemic process to review such land use action.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Bokey?
Yeah, I think, I think we do need to do that. I mean, pretty clearly, it doesn't take very long research to indicate that the thousand-foot minimum is great at making sure that they don't get built because the vast majority of plans for ADUs is, is less than 1,000 feet. Where the right number is, I don't know. I just want to make sure that, that they understand that they can look at both the maximum they understand that they can look at both the maximum and the minimums in, in this.
I think that's probably implicit.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. And I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the amendment, which I will support. This issue came to me by actually one of the public commentators tonight. And I think frankly, it was probably an oversight, perhaps on the planning commission's part that, that wasn't caught, but I don't want to surmise anything. I just am pleased that it's going to go back so that they can take a look at it to get some good public comment tonight. And I'm sure it will be replicated when the planning commission gets a chance to look at this to hopefully clearly understand that it's not only the legislature's policy goal, but this council's policy goal to encourage smart ADU development and construction for housing density purposes in the city of Lakewood.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the amendment articulated by Councilmember Branstadter to Resolution 2025-03, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The resolution, excuse me, the amendment to the resolution passes. We now turn to the resolution as amended. Any further discussion on Resolution 2025-03 as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution 2025-03 as amended has been adopted. Thank you, Ms. Spear. We now turn to Resolution 2025-04. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2025-04, amending the city council rules of procedure.
Thank you. And for this, we have our city attorney, Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Heidi Walker, city attorney for the city of Lakewood. I'm going to call your attention to page 162 in your packet. And what you will find there is some language that we've suggested that you add to your procedures. I'm going to acknowledge upfront that the first numbering you see there on page 162, it says section five, and then you see a five, six, seven, eight. We're going to correct that. That's a Scrivener's error. It's supposed to just be one, two, three, four. But what we're really trying to do is we're trying to acknowledge the recent changes that this council made to its meetings. Right now, what we're trying to do is we're trying to have a regular meeting at seven o'clock on the first Monday, a study session at seven o'clock on the second Monday, and on the third Monday, start at six o'clock with both a study session and a meeting. Now, originally, we had talked a meeting followed by a study session, and then there was some awkwardness about the fact that there's some overlap in the types of reports that are brought and so forth. So what you'll see now is it's mapped out on page 162, 163, and going into 164, what is supposed to happen at those meetings. It's several pages of the procedures, but we figured that way it's all mapped out for whatever kind of meeting you're having. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. It, it looks like we would be having reports from the city manager and city council comments on both the, the, the regular meeting as, as well as the study session. Is that intentional? Or do we need to, can we just move that to one of them? Is there any reason to have it twice in the night, I guess?
I'm looking at the city clerk because she went through this with a pretty fine-toothed comb to try and make sure.
The option here is going to provide for one agenda, which, so it would be one agenda. So it would be one council comment and one manager.
Okay, okay.
I know I often repeat myself, and she's trying to ensure that I don't by having one agenda consolidated for those double meetings.
We, we didn't want to put that that's the Whalen clause.
Exactly, exactly.
Any further questions of the city attorney? Very good. Well, thank you. So I would ask then for a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-04 as articulated by the city attorney.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Branstadter that we adopt Resolution 2025-04 with notation of the brief Scrivener errors that will be corrected. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution 2024-0, excuse me, 2025-04 has been adopted. Seeing no unfinished or new business on the agenda tonight, I'll turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. A few updates. Last week, you might have, and this is the official term, heard a bunch of hubbub regarding federal funding directives coming from the, the, the new administration in Washington, D.C. And so I'll just be right upfront with you. Initially, we were very, very frantic because we thought we were going to be losing all kinds of federal funding. Now, most of our federal funding that we do receive comes through either the Puget Sound Regional Council or, or the state of Washington, for example, WashDOT or Commerce or some other avenue that way. After having conversations with representatives of our federal delegation, and then later on in the week, those directives seemed to have been rescinded and/or the courts seemed to have stepped in. At this point in time, generally speaking, we're not seeing any risk to any of our federal funds. However, the caveat is this, there are some direct funds that we do receive from the federal government that still could be risky, but at this point in time, still to be determined. One of them is the RACE grant. You know, we received $1.1 million. However, that money has been committed through the state of Washington. Matter of fact, that happened week before last. So we're hoping that that's not at risk, but just wanted to bring that to council's attention. Likewise, the $2.5 million in, in direct community funding that Congresswoman Strickland received for the South Tacoma Way project, that too potentially could be, you know, impacted. But again, this body had actually allocated those funds as part of a contract a couple of weeks ago. So again, we think we're okay there. But again, the devil's going to be in the details in the next few weeks or so. Another is, you know, we receive emergency planning money called EPMG funding as part of our partnership with West Pierce Fire District, the city of, City of University Place, and the town of Silicon as it relates to emergency operations and emergency management. That's another potential funding source that could be at risk. And then the last one is a, our, our DV grant that we receive in support of DV services. So those are really the ones that if there's going to be any risk, they could be, but at this point in time, what we're hearing is very, very low, if any. So I just wanted to just raise that and bring that to council's attention.
Just a quick question, Mr. Coffield. So these are interesting times. I don't recall the typical contract clause with, say, the contractor that had the winning bid on maybe South Tacoma Way that might provide that in the, you know, in the event that the funding evaporates or goes away, the city has no contractual liability. What would happen in a situation like this, you know, in the absence of a clause?
That's a great question, Mayor. I, I, I'd be right upfront with you. I do not know. This is brand-new territory.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, cities and our federal delegation, you know, they're, and I would agree with their interpretation on this, these are funds that have already been appropriated legislatively. And for the administration to try and take them back, we just feel is, is, is not right and is wrong. And actually, and I'm not an attorney, but based on what I'm hearing in terms of what a judge did on the East Coast, you know, fully recognize that as well. So I think at this point in time, the risk is pretty low. But you're right, Mayor. If that was to happen, yeah, that would be something that we would have to come back and take a, take a look at.
Very good.
Moving on, I know it's been, we've had a little bit of winter weather. I want to recognize our.
Just a second, Mr. Coffield. Did you have a question on that particular point? Sorry, Mr. Coffield.
The, the two areas that were of concern to me were not the ones that you mentioned because I really saw they were so far down the road and kind of well-defined to be able to go and do that. But that, is there any risk of some redefining eligibility for the expenditures of ARPA funds within that, that, that area where there are some, we, 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 we have designated our ARPA funds for, and obligated them to particular projects, but is, you know, we've always been, and ARPA has had some changes in how the rules would be applied. And is there any risks that rules are going to be applied with, with some changes that might make some of our intended expenditures and thus intended reimbursements at risk?
So Councilmember Branstadter, we have not heard any, any rumblings about any changes to the ARPA funds. And I think as the council is aware, the rules associated with how those are to be allocated was at the Federal Department of Treasury. Now, could the new administration, since they oversee Department of Treasury, make some changes? Yes, absolutely. But again, we're not hearing that that's one area that they are looking at. If they were to, that is something that we would have to address at that time. I will say that the overwhelming majority, well, so first of all, you're right, Councilmember, in that all of the ARPA funds have been allocated and committed to different organizations, entity, projects, et cetera, et cetera. And actually, a good portion of them have already been spent.
Right.
So again, we would take the position that contractually, you know, hands-off, if you will. But again, just like the mayor's question, you know, regarding the contract that we have for South Tacoma Way, I would just add to be determined.
And then my, then my only other thought is that whether there is going to be any long-term, given the philosophy about federal spending that this represents, of, of our strategies have been to try to deal long-term with getting federal dollars to assist in clearing the clear zone. That would be an area that I not necessarily think that has actually come up because it's a Department of Defense item, but we've always had problems with pinning them down to be inconsistent with what they're committing to. And if this is going to be another error, and another period of time of inconsistency, we need to be thinking about the strategies to convince them otherwise. This is, thank you.
Thank you. Keep going.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a little bit of winter weather here. Just want to recognize our crews who have been out since, since Friday evening, just making sure that our streets are, are safe and secure. And that'll continue into the foreseeable future, given that it's expected to continue to be a little wintery through the end of this weekend and to perhaps this weekend as, as well. I just wanted to give you a heads up that, as you know, one of your state capital budget requests is to secure funding for an electronic community notification board over at 96th and South Tacoma Way. And the area that we want to locate it on is adjacent to Pierce, Pierce Transit property. And long story short, probably have to be on their property. And we reached out to Pierce Transit last week to see if they would be willing to partner with us so that we could use that as further justification to get the funding. And I do want to thank their, their CEO, Mike Griffiths, for immediately getting back to us and agreeing to take a look at that and providing us either an easement or something along those lines. So, and I know, Mayor, you sit on the board there. So if you could pass that on, we'd really appreciate it. And they.
I gave a heads up. That's why I called you.
Okay, they, they turned on a dime on that. So we appreciate that. Also, on the funding side, as, as this body is aware, you know, we're dealing with the clean building issue of bringing our, not only city hall, but in the very near future, our police station up to a certain standard as prescribed by the state legislature. And we've completed phase one here at city hall, which was a $1.8 million investment. And we still have about $4 million left, almost $5 million to undertake. But I wanted to let you know, last week or week before, we did submit a $2 million grant to the State Department of Commerce to move forward with a portion of phase two, as well as a portion, actually, phase two and a portion of phase three. But again, as a friendly reminder, we were turned down for a $1 million grant for the exact same purpose earlier this year because the return on investment didn't work. So just wanted to give you a heads up there that we continue plugging away at the available funding. We also want to recognize Senator Nobles, who wrote a letter to her colleagues, you know, expressing, you know, her concerns regarding our concerns over not just the funding, but also from a policy standpoint, are there other ways that this can be addressed or, you know, some different criteria? And there are some good bills down there that are moving forward that we're keeping a track of as, as, as well on, on that front. The other item, I, I got, five of you have committed to March 29th is a council retreat on, on, on a Saturday. And I think the only two we haven't heard back from is Councilmember Pearson and Councilmember Bokey. But if those dates work for you, we would, we would like to go ahead and, and, and dock at that under council comments. Or right now, if you just want to let me know, we can, we can get her done, so to speak.
Yeah, it's a Saturday, which is helpful.
It's a Saturday, yep.
Eight thirty.
So, you know, we like to start early, you know, so 7:00 a.m., you know?
We will.
Actually, you let, you, you let us know, Councilmember Bell. We'll, we'll be more than happy to accommodate.
You're good. Okay, Mr. Bokey, you're good.
Is that work? Okay.
There you go.
Is there a specific time that you would like to start at?
Why don't we do like 8:30 to 1:00-ish?
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Absolutely. Yeah, you got it. Getting back to the South Tacoma Way project, we've been in contact with Congresswoman Strickland's office about a potential ribbon cutting. We're looking at the third week of February, since that's a week that she is likely to be back in town, given some of the, you know, the recesses that they have in Washington, D.C. And specifically, we're looking at Friday, February 21st. So I just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up on that kind of a warning order that that's coming. And we would be doing it down in the International District as well. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay.
This week, we have the, is it this week, February 7th? Yeah, we have the grand opening. It's Friday. Yeah, we have the grand opening of Loses Hygiene Center at 11:30 a.m. over at their location. Saturday evening, we have Caring for Kids, their annual fundraising event. February 15th, following week is the 27th Asia Pacific New Year Celebration. I think, Mayor Whalen, you're going to be speaking at that at Tacoma Dome. On February 18th, we're going to be meeting with Senator Conway. So again, if any of the council would like to come down and talk with him about our legislative priorities, please let me know. Also, on the 19th and 20th of February, AWC will be having their city action days down in Lacey at St. Mountain's University. And then later that evening on February 20th, the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound is going to be having their Legacy of Hope event for 2025. I'd also like to point out our good friend, LT Latasha, his last name is escaping me now.
Worthen.
Is Worthen, thank you, yes. And she is being recognized by the Boys and Girls Club for her leadership, you know, in, in, in her day job, but also through Boys and Girls Club. And just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then on February 26th, Tacoma Pierce County EDB is having their annual meeting. And I know several of you have RSVP to that. And there's still an opportunity, if you haven't, if you wish to attend, let us know. And we'd be more than happy to, to accommodate that. And then I'd just say, looking out to March, Habitat for Humanity is having their annual fundraising lunching event at, at noon in the Hotel Murano as well. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Coffield? Okay, great. Well, let's turn to council comments. Let's start tonight with Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was glad to see that we passed the amendment to clarify the council procedures for the evenings when we're going to have both a regular meeting and a study session. I think the, you know, the one that we did last month was not a real good litmus test because there were really no regular agenda items or, or any other items on the regular meeting. So it sort of flowed the way that we're, we, we, we adopted to do that. But I think that that, that will, 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 will look to work. I have been following some bills that are just sort of down in the legislature. You never know which ones have traction to be able to go and do that. There are any number of them that can be concerned from a local control aspect. One that I am particularly concerned about is one. One that I am particularly concerned about is one that would allow, in lieu of constructing an ADU, that you could park an RV permanently on a property and use it as a, as a permanent residence to be able to go and do that. And I, and I do, you know, would, 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 would look to see if, if Mr. Boki could discuss that with the executive committee at SHAPE, because they don't seem to have taken a position on that one way or the other. But, you know, it, it'd be a great economic development move because it would create a market for all the broken down RVs and travel trailers that people could buy and just park in their backyard and hook up with a, with a garden hose and, you know, and, 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 and do that. But would not make for aesthetic neighborhoods. Mayor, I, I think that the, the proclamations tonight and the presentation of them to the folks that are going to take on the role of, of hidden heroes to represent a great many others like them, to be able to do that was, was a good, a, a, a good thing to do and for, for us, for us to be able to go, go and do that. And I look forward to the releases of the, of, of the names and the, and the, and the explanations of their significant roles as, as we go, as we move on through the month. Thank you.
Thank you, it was wonderful to see the first one, is one of our students, Mr. Washington, that was great. Mr. Pearson, next?
Mr. Mayor, just battling another ailment here at this winter. I attended P RAB last week and if anyone wants to go watch a great meeting where they can get an overview of all of the events going on in the city for the year and kind of the layout of all the parks, activities and projects. Last week's meeting was a good one to do that, it's kind of the overall, you know, here's the plan for the year and, and things like that. So that was last Thursday. If you have a chance to go, go watch that one, tell you all the ins and outs of, of, of the parks, projects and events. I also attended PSRC and one of the, one of the items on, on the agenda was voting for this, this list of projects that is eligible for, for funds. I think they had like $20 million in funding or something, but it was, I, I don't really understand how the, some of the things were not ranked well, they were ranked Ds and Fs and things like that. And so, but they seemed like great projects. And there was, there was a number of, of Pierce Transit projects on there that all seemed like good projects. So, you know, they selected some, you know, A-list projects, some B-list, some C-list and D. But I think beyond that, then, then none of them were selected. So there's a committee of people that kind of put these lists together, is my understanding. And so it was a little frustrating to see some of the, the good Pierce Transit projects, you know, not get the list, I guess. So anyway. Yeah, and then I, I don't know yet if I'm going to be able to attend the Caring for Kids thing, is we going to honor it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to just comment on the Hidden Heroes presentation and the videos that are coming out. I just think they're, they're just wonderful and it's really great to highlight people in our community with that. And I'm really excited about Easy Fiber being another option for our community. I think that that is incredible. And then also it being underground aesthetically, I think that that just really is a boon for our community. And then just to remind everyone to be very safe out there in the inclement weather and thank our crews for doing everything that they possibly can to keep us very safe and with clear roads in Lakewood, we appreciate them very much, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will, I will echo what my previous council members have, have stated for a couple of these. The proclamations today, the, the Hidden Heroes, they really showcase the best in our community. And it's important that we recognize them for what they do. And I look forward to all the videos as they come out. In regards to our Heritage Advisory Board folks that we thanked tonight, I want to thank them again for their passion to preserving and protecting our landmarks and history and insist that the city, as they take on the baton and hand that off to other, other representatives, that they don't take that lightly because it's, it's really important that we respect and protect our, our heritage here in the city. I appreciate the, the discussion about ADUs. I think it's, it's, seems to be an oversight that it was a thousand square foot minimum for an ADU, that doesn't make any sense to me. And I think we can probably lean on some best practices of our neighboring communities and, and see what's worked for them as we, as we clean that up. In regard to Easy Fiber, as I talked two weeks ago when we met, having options for utilities for our residents is a good thing. And competition drives down price at, while increasing quality. So people have the choice for what their best utilities can be for their internet. I was excited about the MFT work for the Lakewood Station District properties. I think it's, it's working the right way, right? We're incentivizing people to build in areas that need it the most, to provide housing for folks near public transportation. I think it's an example of things working well, so I'm glad we did that. Last two things, on Wednesday, I'll be at the Public Safety Advisory Committee as they get together again. It's a great group, so I look forward to that. And I'll, I'll finish saying the same thing that Ms. Bell said. Thank you to our city staff for keeping our roads safe with this inclement weather. It's, I sometimes get woken up by the snowplow driving by, but it's a good thing, so thank you to our crews.
Councilmember Boki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Planning Commission starts up again Wednesday night. And as Councilmember Branstadter mentioned, the SHAPE Executive Board on Friday morning. So I'll be attending those, see, see how they go. I mean, this, the housing thing just really is just not good right now. And no, no good deed goes unpunished, apparently. So we're talking about trying to encourage ADUs, they're saying, well, you should add RVs or something. So not sure where this is all going to land, but depending on what the legislature decides, I guess we're going to have some serious discussions about some things. So I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Very good, well, thank you all, I, I don't want to repeat all the comments. I think the agenda tonight was a good one, the presentations and proclamations were, were great. I just want to make the comment on the first hero, Mr. Washington, a member of the Youth Council. I, I just want to, I don't need to remind all of you, but I think it's incredibly valuable that we have a youth council. And I harken back to the days that, that former council member, Deputy Mayor and Mayor Claudia Thomas, indicated how important it was to have youth involved in the city and, and have a voice. And it's wonderful to see that come to fruition through young people like we saw, Mr. Washington and the other two members of the council who came to present tonight. You know, I have, in the last couple of years, been honored, if you will, to be contacted by former members of our youth council, usually the chairs that have been council chairs over the years who've asked me out for coffee. You know, they've been in college and they wanted to come back and touch base. And they each individually and collectively have expressed how meaningful their time has been with us and how I think impactful it was in their career decisions in part. And so, you know, it's good stuff that we do there and the more, the better, I think, on youth council work. The couple of comments on the public comments, I just to reiterate in case there was an air, scrivers air, otherwise, the contribution toward the Pierce County Good Neighbor Village project was $1 million of ARPA funds, not 100 million. I know that that was a minor mistake, but I don't want the public to think that it was bigger than what it was. Meaningful nonetheless, but not 100 million. The social media out there, Mr. Coffield, there's a little bit of a dust up about the building condition based on some photographs of the fencing around the city hall. And I know we already passed the resolution to authorize the construction of the fix and repair work. Might have Ms. Grimley just kind of take a look at that and put some factual information out there that it hasn't been due to, you know, lack of maintenance over the years. In fact, we've, since we've been here, repainted those darn beams at least a couple of times. But I think it's important to just let people know that we're on it. The other public comment about a budget for neighborhood association meetings is not a bad thought. It may be something that we ask Mr. Davis to make a proposal to the city manager. It may be a minor budget, you know, $50 or $100 or something for the various neighborhood associations in a given year. I don't know, but I don't think that it was a bad comment.
So I, I will say, Mayor and council, as you know, we draw on resources from throughout the city. So that hasn't been an issue to be able to fund those types of things.
Great.
We just wanted to let you know.
So maybe he can communicate out if they have need, like, you know, for the pavilion meeting, it's a typical urn of coffee that we have out there, it doesn't cost us very much.
That's correct.
You know, a few little cookies or whatever.
Then a lot of the flyers and other things we do, a lot of that we do electronically. Again, that comes from citywide resources.
Absolutely, just as long as they know, that would be great. I do intend to try to appear at the February 7th Loss of Hygiene Open House. As Mr. Coffield indicated, I'm going to speak at the New Year's Celebration on the 15th for the Asia Pacific New Year Celebration. And I will attend the EDB meeting on the 26th. The Habitat Lunch, I'll, I'll try to put on the calendar, as I understand it, this is Maureen Fife's last year as CEO of Habitat. So I'm sure it'll be a fabulous meeting for her and for the organization. So that is all I have, unless there are any other alibis for the good of the order? Mr. Boki?
Now that you're, we're, we're piling on the youth council here, I'd, I'd like to note that Albert James, a former member of our youth council, who I believe was a, probably a 2019 graduate of, of Lakes High School, went on to graduate, I believe, from Washington State University, Edward R. Morrow School of Broadcasting. And he's now kind of working his way through the broadcasting career and I'm also a Facebook friend. And he's now reporting from the Washington State Capitol and Olympia for various outlets. And in fact, I was watching the news one night at home and there he was.
Isn't that great?
I believe it was on Channel 13, but he indicates it's for several stations in Western Washington.
That's fabulous.
He's making his way and then he's also down there doing, doing political things and government things, so it shows a work down.
Lord help him for that, but he, nonetheless, was a great young man, yeah. Well, very good, we will now recess into executive session for approximately 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101G to review the performance of a public official or a public employee. The city council is not expected to take action following our executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. So for now, we will be in recess, thank you.